I'm going to call the City Council Work Session to Order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Felder.
Present.
Whitman.
Excused.
Stillgrave. Vining.
Here.
Germany.
Here.
Lomore.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Present. So we have four items on the work session agenda. Before I start, obviously, we have some personnel that won't be able to attend with us this evening, including Mr. Pastu, the City Manager. So as we go down, and our Assistant City Manager is actually in session in Texas. So now we see our public safety, our Police Chief here as the next representative by the Charter. And I know that Mr. Cochran has a few items that he'll be presenting as well. So I'll just look to Chief Tolstead. I guess our first item is the newsletter.
That's correct, Your Honor. First item on the agenda for the work session is 3581, Discussion of Monroe Today Newsletter.
Ms. Egan's going to do some presentation and discussion.
There we go. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Jody Egan, Director of Communications. Just here tonight, following up on our recent initiative pursuing newsletter for the city of Monroe. As you know, this course of action came out of our goals and objectives sessions that we held this past January to set council's goals for the next two years. And the desire was to create a communication piece, either digital or print, that could be utilized by our residents that had not only information about aspects of the municipality and programs that we do, a little bit about the city, but also some of our cultural resources, events, businesses, et cetera. So we kind of took this concept based on some experience that I had had at my previous employment at the city of Wyandotte, wherein we have a magazine called Wyandotte Today, which is a facet of a group called Community Publishing. And I have a representative here tonight, Mark Fisher. He'll go into a little bit more detail about that company and how they collaborate with different communities to help with a magazine, producing a magazine. So that is an avenue that we thought would be a great resource that kind of will kind of address two concepts in one. The first one was, first thing City Council really was looking for was to have a welcome to the city of Monroe, a new resident packet, so to speak. And the second one was something that would physically be mailed to residents' homes. And the reason for that being is when you have so many different communication methods, digitally especially, digital especially, things kind of can become white noise. So how many Facebook pages? Then you've got Twitter, Instagram. You know, you're kind of bombarded with things, Facebook groups, newspaper. Which, what do you check today to see? And I personally find it exhausting to do that, of course. But, but we kind of have swung the pendulum in the other way, where the print resources kind of seem to be a little more scarce, more scarce than they used to be. We kind of get some coupons in the mail. You might toss them right in your cycle bin. But we have found that residents really appreciate and respond well when we would do our mail, when we would do a millage campaign and provide a mailer. So they don't have to kind of go seek that information out. It's delivered right to their home. And Community Publishing is a group that has kind of specialized in creating that kind of print engagement with communities and their residents, and have done a good job, an excellent job with that. And in my experience working for the city of Wyandotte, those print publications that are mailed to every residency are very well received. And they can function as a welcome to the city and also be based seasonally, just like a regular magazine would be, so seasonal or quarterly. So we were looking at kind of, this is where we're at right now, and this is kind of an update, just to stimulate the conversation and kind of see if council's interested in proceeding along these directions, as you know from Vince's agenda item. So based on residency, working with the Postmaster General, we have kind of estimated we would need about 10,000 printed copies. 7,500 of those would be direct mailed, and 2,500 would be extra copies to be distributed elsewhere. That could be in City Hall, local businesses, welcome centers, I-75 Welcome Center, or sent to kind of other places around, around the community, the libraries, for example, MCOP Opportunity Center, et cetera. These would be full-color magazines, of which we have samples, and I believe there was a link in your agenda to the digital copies as well that you could review from different community partners. And these are full, nice glossy magazines that are stapled, and inside there are articles about the city of Monroe, like our municipal, our municipal programs, for example. Maybe in the summer, there would be an article about tree canopies and why we plant the types of trees that we do in the city, and what is our program with our arborist to kind of address trees that are facing out and facing in. The next article may be about a spotlight on a volunteer that works within the community. Another article may be about the high, a high school sports program, or a local business that had recently opened up, or a longstanding business and spotlighting the owner that had been in the city for a long time. And within that magazine, there would also be advertising, which is, I'm going to let, kind of let Mark go into a little more detail about that, but one of the ways that the magazine is actually funded. So that's like the big question, right? That all sounds great, but how much does all this cost? So eventually, the point of it is to sell advertising that will compensate for the production of a magazine. So magazine prices will vary depending on whether, how many pages it is, 16 pages, 36, 32 pages, and so on and so forth. Initially, we would like to have a format where we will have a first quarter issue that would be every year, a welcome to the city of Monroe. And that would include cultural resource overview, a city directory of departments, frequently asked questions about departments of the city, like where can I get my recycling toter? Who do I call about a stray cat? Where do I go to find information about voting? So those are all really, and my parents who live in the city of Wyandotte get this magazine and keep that inaugural issue all year long in their magazine stand, so they can refer to, go back and see, how many churches are in the city? What times are the Mass? What's the public schools? Where are the libraries within the city located? Where are the resources, different, different types of resources that they can take advantage of, as well as like a business directory? So it can be pretty comprehensive, but, so that inaugural issue in January would be one that residents could keep and could use all year round. Subsequent issues, if we were doing a quarterly basis, which is what we recommend, would be seasonal. So you might have a, Chris, I'm kind of jumping quarters, but you know, the Christmas would be holiday shopping in the city of Monroe. Summer could be the festival season. What are the events and the activities, which include kind of our perimeter too? You know, Monroe County Fair, that's a huge event. Fair Parade goes through town. Focus and spotlight on some of those. And September, the fall quarter, could be back to school and highlight some of our local businesses that offer resources for parents and children. Focus on schools. So there's a lot of wonderful thematic elements and stories that we can tell in the community, which I know is what you want to do, not only just to educate the public on what we do here at the city, our programs, and what we can offer our residents, and all the great things that we're doing and the progress we're making on various projects. But also to kind of tell those stories about our residents and spotlight things like the wonderful 5th Third Garden planting, you know, what is going on at the Opportunity Center? I think they could have a magazine all by themselves with all the programs that they do. So, so that's kind of where we're at with that. We've kind of explored a little bit of the costs, and I'll kind of let Mark kind of talk a little bit about how those costs materialize. And there may be kind of a, an introductory investment on our part, but based on our initial feelers put out, we feel like it would be very well received in terms of advertising for some of our corporate and business partners within the community to place an ad. The ads are very affordable in the magazine. And being mailed to every residency, every resident in the house, in the city, pardon me, is going to be a real great return on investment, because I know when that magazine rolls in, people are going to be definitely thumbing through it, looking for coupons to a local business that they might patron frequently, cut those out and save them, et cetera. So that's kind of a broad overview, and I'll let Mark go into a little more detail about how we arrived at the costs and the different types of format, but a little bit about his company as well, so you can kind of understand how this relationship came to be, or this, you know, this, this work that we've kind of been doing behind the scenes to kind of get the information ready and presentable. So at this point, I think I will introduce Mark Fisher up to the podium with Community Publishing, and then I can come up and answer some more questions. Like I said, kind of a broad overview, just to kind of get you an update on where we're at, and kind of get the gears turning, and see if this is kind of a direction we want to be moving in. So, Mark, come on up.
Thanks, Jody. Welcome, Mark.
Wow, what an introduction. That was amazing. Thinking about hiring her in about three minutes.
Again, it's Mark Fisher with Community Publishing and Marketing in our Today magazines. And we have 17 different Today magazines. And you can see just from some of the samples that this is such a hyper-local magazine. Everything that we do for that particular city and/or township is only about that particular city and/or township. So when we talk about Wyandotte, it's all about Wyandotte. When we talk about West Bloomfield, it's all about West Bloomfield. Obviously, when we talked about, when we talk about Monroe, it'll all be about Monroe. And what we do is, we basically listen and we engage in conversations with the leaders within the community, whether it's the city, whether it's the township, whether it's both, or whether it's one of them. And then we talk with the DDAs. We talk with the Chamber. We talk with the businesses. We talk with the residents, and we see what they want to see in this magazine. Because after all, when we go through this process over the entire year through a quarterly magazine, it's their magazine. It's your magazine. So we'll make sure that everyone is taken care of within the magazine. We'll make sure that we're touting some incredible initiatives that you guys are putting together that maybe some people don't know about yet and should know about. The whole point of this, whether it's from the schools, whether it's from the city yourself, is about transparency, and it's about touting some of the incredible things that are going on, and really making people feel warm and fuzzy about the neighborhood that they work, live, and play. And so when we started this 10 years ago, our vision really was what you guys said 10 minutes ago. It was just a newsletter. It was just to have a four-page newsletter that somebody could, that a city could put together and send out to their residents. And then all of a sudden, it morphed into an eight, and a 16, and a 32, and, and a 64. And you can see some of these incredible things within each selective magazine, is every single magazine, every single community, it's all curtailed to them. So like Jody said, when we're talking, when we're in that season, when we're talking about some great things that are going on in the holidays, we're really enveloping the entire community to make sure that they're warm and fuzzy about the holidays. And when there's festivals going on, we literally encapsulate everything that's going on with the festivals, and we make it that, that addition. And then we get the businesses involved, and I think the businesses really gravitate towards this hyper-local extension, this hyper-local platform. And I think that that's when you really bring everyone together. That's when you coalesce as a community, and that's when things really begin to interact and engage. And that's the whole concept of this magazine itself. We do have a digital form. We have a media flip that everyone has privy to. So when we have the tangible out there, there will also be a digital component to it. So it really can engage the different audiences, the different demographics that want the digital version and/or the tangential, the tangible version. So that's really what we do every single day. We have 17 Today communities, so we're putting out one, and sometimes two publications a week. So every single day, we're busy on three, four, or five different communities. And this would be something that we would put into the schedule. We would work hand-in-hand with the representative, with probably Jody, to make sure that we put that into the schedule in Q1, Q2, Q3, Q4, that would actually fit and make sense with some of the things that are going on. So if we wanted to start it in January, that's fine. If we wanted to start it in February, that's fine. Or March, that's fine. And then obviously, if it's January, we would do April, July, and October. And if we were doing March, you'd do the 3, 6, 9, 12. You'd do the March, the June, the September, and the December. And it sort of correlates. And so you can just picture in your head how you would utilize this space when you're talking about the different seasons. And I know that businesses would do the same thing. I know that schools would do the same thing. The DDA, I'm sure, can picture how to utilize the space in that quarterly realm, and then obviously, you guys as well. So without further ado, I can take some questions, if you'd like.
Sure. And Jody, if you have anything further than that, we'll see if there's questions from council.
Yeah.
I might have a comment. I know that Clerk LaVoy also sat on those meetings as well. We might have some input thoughts. I'm glad you had brought a copy. That was one of my questions to make sure, hopefully, council had a chance to, opportunity to view the example that was sent, but these are the, what was being presented as options. Jody?
Well, and just to wrap it up, just briefly, I wanted to go over some of the who, what, where's, just to kind of put a fine point on some of the questions you may have and address the ones that may be coming. So of course, the who would be a collaboration between the city of Monroe and Community Publishing. Staff representative would be myself. Would be, of course, the person responsible for, you know, working with Community Publishing, writing articles, potential, and page layouts. I do all graphic design for the city in-house, and I have done actually page layouts for Community Publishing in my prior employment. But we would, I would also look to be contracting assistance with writing articles and photography, because as you know, there's quite a lot of communication responsibilities within the city, and I would need some assistance with that. So that would kind of be the who. When, we had initially thought about launching potentially in the fall, but with the upcoming millage project, we are looking at a January launch, potentially, if council would like us to proceed in that direction. And if you would, we could provide some additional information. How and how much? Those are probably the most pertinent questions, right? So, and, and once again, I will preface it by saying that we have had really positive feedback initially from those that we have told about the concept. And they are interested in supporting, moving forward with sponsorships and advertising. That is how the magazine will pay for itself. So I know, and Mark can probably say, a lot of the, many of the communities that he probably works with have supplemented the cost of their printing with advertising. So that would be the model that we would be looking to move in the direction of, is that we provide such a quality product, and I would make sure that it would be very professional, on-brand, on-point, and plan to be involved in every aspect of the design and implementation, that we will create a product that is attention-grabbing, that people want to be a part of. And once again, being mailed to every residency, every resident, I'm using that, every resident in, every house in the city, every mailing address.
Every resident.
Every resident and business will be getting copies that I feel like, if we can get something fantastic right out the gate, that we will be building some momentum very quickly. But initial costs, per se. So we would be looking at a 32-page publication for design, which they do provide, Community Publishing does provide design services, but I mean, I would be supplementing that as well. Print, for printing, mail prep, and delivery to the post office. So that's like, the whole package, 7,000 plus tax for the printing, designing, mail and prep. That's for 32 pages, and the postage on that would be $1,500. So in terms of, I don't know how many of you have done, of course, Mr. Lomore is very, Councilman Lomore is very aware of how much print costs are and mailing costs, and that is, you know, a very reasonable and, and a cost, as to my perceptions, and of course, Councilman can speak to that, to that as well, if he agrees. And then the cost would go up per page count there. So initially, what I would propose is a larger page count addition for a first quarter, which would include a welcome-to-the-city component, business directory, city overview, like I said, cultural resources, schools, libraries, kind of like that broad overview of the community, which I think has been a very successful model in other communities. Like I said, residents hold on to those as a resource all year round, which I really believe people would appreciate, because sometimes, as much as we try to make the website as user-friendly as possible, there are hundreds and hundreds of pages and new content to rise to the top, and sometimes it's hard to siphon through that. We tried to design the website to, to address the way different people think. You can use a search bar. You can use a mega menu. You can scroll down the front page, but sometimes things still have a hard time coming to the top. It's the nature of an immense site like that. So having some of those things at your fingertips now is like a novelty. You know, I get that magazine in the mail, and I'm kind of flipping through it really quick. So, so that's kind of an overview, and we can get some additional prices for more content, more pages, but basically, a 16-page magazine, which we could fill up 10 times over, really, but is 4,500 plus tax. The postage is the same, 1,500. 32 pages is 7,000. Well, we wouldn't be paying tax, of course. I'm sorry, I don't know. I was just reading off. We would, we, of course, you know, we would be paying tax, but 4,500 for 16 pages, 7,000 for 32 pages, et cetera. Now, how are these things paid for? What are the advertising rates? And I have that here for you, just to give you an idea. So business card ads go for, like, they start at 3,000 or a yearly, if you reserve it yearly, or 300, if you reserve it yearly per issue, 250. Full-page ads are 950, which I've advertised in magazines for the city of Monroe and paid double for half a size ad for, you know, like Eerie Living and et cetera. So, and cover issues, back cover 1,500, inside front cover 1250. So you can see even at a $7,000 magazine, how many of those ads we would have to sell. I imagine we would be able to get some momentum to cover some costs kind of out the gate with, with some of the sample material that we have had and can, and can put together. So, so that kind of gives you a little bit of an idea. I think I addressed maybe some of your questions that may be coming, who, what, where, when, and how. Lots of good luck wishes and well wishes in my direction. So yeah, so now, of course, I just wanted to say that before we open it up for questions for myself or Mark.
Thanks, Jody. Thanks, Mark. I'll see if there's questions from council members. I'll start with Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, just wanted to ask you a question regarding the mailing. Appears that you're going to be sending this out via EDGM. Am I correct in saying that? Every Door Direct Mail piece?
Yeah, it's a saturated mailing, so it'll go to every single business and every single resident through the U.S. Post Office. Yes.
For each route that's within the city of Monroe?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever thought about possibly getting a nonprofit postage status for the city?
We, so we can, in the preliminary stages, if there is an advertising, and if you guys are the general producer of the magazine. And that's what Jody and I sort of talked about. So that's a really good question, and that's what we should talk about in front of the forum, is that if this works out where you guys want to do this with just my guidance and not under the Today Magazine umbrella for the first two issues or the first four issues, for that matter, you guys can do it under your, under your own name, and you would get a nonprofit status. And that's fine, and that's smart. But as we morph into the Today Magazine, we would take it over, and then we couldn't get the nonprofit status. But also, we'd be able to bring in a lot more advertising to absorb some of that cost. So it's a really good, we would only do this, and we only do business with anybody, is if we can create that win-win for all parties involved. So I think that in the preliminary stages, you probably could produce a 16 or a 32-pager, and within the Indisha, get a nonprofit permit and get a better rate for the post office. And then as we morph, as we grow bigger, as we become more familiar with one another and work hand-in-hand with one another, and ameliorate every single day, then we can morph into the Today magazines. We can turn this thing into a 32, a 48, a 64-pager, take it into the Today platform, and then, you know, it'll be the extra postage that we'll need to pay for regular rate would be absorbed through businesses.
And obviously, you know, when we talk about, you know, doing the magazine, either, this newsletter format, either independently or with a collaboration with Community Publishing, there are a lot of benefits, you know, to doing a collaboration. You know, the sponsorship allocation, the assistance with the design and writing, that is, you know, putting out a 32, 64-page magazine is just something that I don't think is feasible in terms of our staffing level, which is me, to be able to do that in addition to everything else. So that, that is part of what they offer, is, you know, their digital platform, the resources that they can bring to the table, advertising, design, potential photography and writing. So those are some of the benefits to collaborating with a partner.
Councilman?
Yeah, just as far as collaborating, I have no problem with, with doing a collaboration. I understand that you would not be able to do this on your own. Obviously, being in the business myself, I completely understand that. But I just wanted to see if there was a possibility of maybe saving a few more dollars on our end to, you know, satisfy the post office with what they need to have done. And I thought that basically, by having some sort of voter information on there, you could continue doing the nonprofit status, but that's not possible, because you guys take it over from that essence. Is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah. So ask the question one more time, if you don't mind.
Yeah, if, if you take.
Because you're, you're talking about us having nonprofit status, or us being able to utilize that nonprofit permit on the Indisha, right?
Correct.
Okay. Right this second, we've gone through so many different stages in trying to figure out how to do that, and our company can't do that. You would have to do that as a city. And we can still guide you through that, but it also takes into consideration how much advertising you would have in the publication, so we would have to work on, off of that criteria.
Sure.
To make sure that you were still with, under that. And in the preliminary stages, like I said, that's probably the route that you should go. And then as we get bigger, and as we have more advertising in it, and as you are taken out of that realm where you can no longer meet the USPS guidelines, then all of a sudden, we'll sit together again, and we'll make, and we'll make. we'll sit together again and we'll make, and we'll make a smart, intelligent, legal decision that says that we have to morph into a different rate. So-
Understood.
Okay.
Understood.
Sorry about that.
No, you're, you're good. One other question regarding, is, is this something that you guys do in-house? Do you, do you do the paper yourself, or the magazine, I should say, by your-
Yeah, so, so when I say in-house, I should, full disclosure, it's our parent company is the printer. They're Printwell Printing is a commercial printer.
We're-
Okay, good. So they're a 20, 30 million dollar business, they have the sheet fed, they have the web, they have everything that we would need in order to make sure that all of our promises come true when we're putting together these publications, not only from a monetary standpoint, but from a timing standpoint, from a, an aesthetic standpoint, and making sure that everything looked fantastic. So we work hand-in-hand with our parent company, and obviously, I'm the son company.
Perfect.
And of course, all the costs of the magazine, those are all, you know, could potentially be covered with sponsorships as well. So that's something that, you know, we can get a, a good feel for if we're, if we're given permission to kind of move forward with looking into this, would be to kind of gauge how much interest there is in supporting with advertising through the magazine as well. So there may be not as great cost outgoing, outlay of costs by the city.
Sure, and that's a really good point by Jody, is preliminary or in the early stages, you'll probably be absorbing most of the cost, and then as we take it over, you'll be absorbing probably 35 cents on the dollar after that, when we get up and running, and when we're actually running a full-force Today Magazine like you see with some of those other samples. So it all goes into how quickly you guys want to be up and running, what you guys want to put into it, and then we'll figure out the support that we get behind us with all the different businesses, and how we incorporate all those pieces together in order to absorb all these different costs, and then obviously alleviate not only stress points from a design standpoint, but also just from a production standpoint, and then also from a monetary standpoint as well.
Other, Michelle?
Who will be the boots-on-the-ground getting the advertising for the magazine? I know Jody can't do all of it, so is that your company that does it?
Yeah, so, and that's what we're working on right this second. I think that Jody and her team may be able to do three, four, five, six businesses, but then, when it really comes into the painstaking process of going out there and fielding the calls and boots-on-the-ground and really making these cold calls and really developing these relationships over time, because that's really what it takes. It'll be my team, my sales team. And that's what we're, we're just trying to make sure that this is a win-win for both parties, that this is really the smart thing to do every step of the way, so that slowly but surely, it'll morph into where you guys are doing it, and you guys are doing it smartly as far as taking advantage of some of the rates and the postages and things of that nature, and then moving over into the Today Magazine platform when the time is right.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'd just say, I know from the meetings we had and then the group that was there, just continue to learn more information about this as I go, but I know that as we started, even before this year, it was last year and this year, how we are being asked by our residents and others about communicating messages, I know I still get an email or two from a particular person wants to send me examples from other communities, and they're, they're different, but it's, it's, it's electronic, but it's, it's more about marking something different than I think the message. The message is there, but I think this is going to do what we were talking about, trying to find all alternatives, media alternatives. Obviously, we have relationships with our, our radio and television, they call it newspaper, but the newsletter and how we, how and what we want to send out, really, I think it's a great opportunity to tell, inform the public about our staff and what we do, and who they can go to, whether it's something about, you know, we, we've had a lot of conversation about the, you know, the, the parks and other items, and who, who is doing that, and what programs are being done. I think it's, as Jody said, there's the initial one, which gives a kind of a collection of information, might be retained, but what's happening this month, or what's happening this quarter, and opportunities to introduce actually our residents to our staff as well, and have maybe bios about that. I'd rather see bios about the great work our, our leadership team and our staff is doing than myself or some others. I think it's more about, that's the, the public's going to have contact with when they have the need or to meet now at their house. So just another opportunity to have a, so today's the work session, just to kind of present the topic, get the idea where, where the community's at. Obviously, we'll have more conversation and then before it comes back to the council at some point, so we may be a topic that we have further discussion on, unless there's other questions or comments at this point. Jody, anything final?
Thank you.
Okay, Mark, thank you. Jody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Chief Tulsa, the next is-
Yep, next item up for discussion, Your Honor, is 3582, railroad grade separation in study grants, be presented by Mark Cochran, Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mark Cochran, Economic and Community Development Director. Earlier in May, we, Vince, myself, and City Engineer Patrick Lewis met with Mr. Zangara, as well as Dan from Quandale, to talk about some funding opportunities, some rather large, significant funding opportunities that are available to the tune of between $5.5 to $6 billion between the state and federal government for the purposes of rail crossing, safety, and also upgrades and underpasses and things of that sort. And so we wanted to bring this forward to discussion with City Council tonight to hear more about the programs that are available, as well as possibly considering putting together a plan of action to start attacking and exploring some of these funds more in-depth, looking at some of the specifications and the qualifications that come with the state and federal funds. It looks like the city could be a very well-qualified candidate to chase some of these funds. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Chris Zangara with Manik and Smith to talk a little bit more about the program. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Mark.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. How's everybody? So today, wanted to talk to you a little bit about some potential grant opportunities that are being floated out there by state and federal governments. So we've been working, Manik and Smith has been working with Quandal Consultants on pursuit of some of these grants and grant opportunities for various communities. I am from Monroe, I've lived here all my life. I've worked on the original rail grade separation on North Dixie Highway from a design standpoint, from a construction standpoint, and that's, by the way, is the photo that's up on the screen and on the first page of your handout there. And so I've always often thought about since that project, how we could try to find funding to move forward with additional projects for the city that would benefit it from a number of different aspects. Some of them are pretty obvious, like traffic snarls and congestion reduction, fire and safety, police response, you know, emergency vehicles, connectivity. There's several rail tracks that run through Monroe, they basically sever's Monroe, cuts it all to pieces. There was a larger project, and this project that's focused, faced, or photographed that we did a little over 20 years ago was the first phase of a much larger, broader, grander project, which was the Monroe Rail Consolidation. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. But just a little short background with me, I work for Manik and Smith, I've worked for Manik and Smith for 26 years. I'm our, our bridge group manager for the entire company, and we've been teaming with, like I said, Quandal Consultants, Tim Hefner. I'm going to have him introduce himself and a little bit about Quandal.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity. I'm Tim Hefner from Quandal Consultants. I formerly was the Director of Rail for the Michigan Department of Transportation. I spent 40 years at MDOT, 30 of it in rail, and I've been involved in the city of Monroe going back to the, to the days when I was in local services and doing projects in, in Monroe County and the, and the city of Monroe, as well as all the grade separation, all the grade crossing safety work and the grade crossing surfacing work. My, my folks worked with Manik and Smith and the city on the Dixie Highway project. But today, what we're, we're talking about is this new federal program, and there are many, many times, many talks, many places where there's been conversations about building grade separations to provide flow into the, in and out of the community, but one of the big stumbling blocks has always been, where does the money come from? And I think the federal government and the state have realized that, and they've been working on independently two programs that offer a solution for that. The state right now is looking at a grade crossing separation fund, and legislation is pending on that. Hopefully, that will be moved within this session. They're not talking about whether or not there's a need for the program as much as they are talking about the dollar value that goes into it. So there's an, there's not an argument, but there's just the discussion and debate about how large it should be. So that's always, always a good thing. And then at the federal level, in the bipartisan infrastructure bill or the IIJA, the federal government put $5.5 billion over six, over five years of the program, about 600 million a year in a competitive grant program for grade separations. All of these do require a local match, but at least there is a source, and what we've been thinking about is, is that you apply for the federal funds, apply for the state funds, and leverage one another to try and reduce the amount of money that a local community would have to put in. So-
So up on the screen, up on the screen, I'm going to have Tim talk a little bit about the, the state and federal funding a little bit and the amounts, and it's also the second page of your handout.
Yeah, yeah. And Mayor, I think you've been at, were at some of the meetings a year or two ago that Congresswoman Dingell hosted, and, you know, where we were talking about these separation programs, so the outcome of that was really moving forward the state program, and it's, it's public information, they've been looking at somewhere between $100 and $150 million for that, for that program. As I mentioned earlier, the 6.6, the 5.5 billion over six years at the, at the federal level, and when you look at it, you know, there's some, in the state side, there's some key points, you know, looking at first responders, looking at access to trauma centers, looking at where major manufacturing facilities are, looking at where, you know, the major traffic generators are, what the, and all of that, so those are all being considered. And then at the federal level, they're looking at considering, of course, safety, which everybody does, environmental sustainability, quality of life issues, reconnecting communities that have been severed because of these, of these rail lines, trying to get things in a state of good repair, and trying to take and, and involve in new and additional technology, which MDOT actually has a, has a major grant that we're, that Quandal is working with them on, on particularly trespassing and, and things like this. The other thing is, is that, I mentioned it is a competitive grant program at the, at the federal level, and, you know, the thing is, is being able to put forth a good application. We've had very good success when Secretary of Transportation Buttigieg was at Mackinac Island, he announced about $380 million of rail-related projects that were being funded. Two of them were in Michigan, one, there was about $30 million between those two projects. One of them was for about $22 million that, that MDOT applied for, for the state-owned rail. We did that application for them. We've done a number of applications for MDOT and other states and local communities, and have a very good success rate. So, you know, there are some, some really good opportunities here with this funding and working together with, with Quandal's knowledge on the rail and Bridge Side and Manik and Smith's local connections, and working on the, on the road and, and Bridge Side, we think that we offer a good opportunity here.
Yep, thanks, Tim. And it's, it's all about the opportunity. That's what we're here talking about, is the funding's out there, it's available. Monroe certainly has a need. Anybody lived here for any length of time, they know all too well how, how the congestion can get, especially if there's a, an accident on I-75, and there's a rail, there's a train that stopped dead or moving super slow, it's like gridlock. And then try to get a police officer or a safety vehicle across that, it's near impossible. So this is a real opportunity. Like Tim was saying, these grants are very competitive, it's all about readiness, about getting your studies in place, about getting things rolling. Monroe is unique, they have more than 20 years of history of trying to do that, that's going to look quite well in a grant application. So you have that going for you, as well as the problems that we have to face. So if you could flip to the next slide. What I tried to do here is I attempted to sort of rudimentary, rudimentary, show you what the impacts could be of some projects, and we're looking at this from a west side of Monroe-type projects and east side. So west side, east side. The west side is more of the low-hanging fruit, if you will, it's a, potentially a grade separation at one of three potential locations that we think that would improve the fire safety, rescue, the connectivity, and even enhance non-motorized with the loop trail and other trail systems that are extending through the city now. So that's the west side. We think that that could be a, kind of a first and an initial pursuit, looking at opportunities in that area. And then the east side of Monroe, which is a much broader, larger sort of animal to skin, it's, it's a huge project. It was that second phase of the Monroe, Monroe, or the North Dixie Highway Bridge Project that we did. It's the Monroe Rail Consolidation Program, which is essentially taking all the tracks on the east side and, and pushing them into one corridor on, on that same rail line as the, the bridges at Dixie. And that would ultimately result in a reduction of those severed neighborhoods and the addition, or the, the increased fire and safety response. It also brings connectivity with the various alternatives from connection to I-75 from La Plesance, driving down the east side of Monroe. I mean, there's, there's many possibilities I laid out on there, but it's just to kind of, kind of think about, and I got a little bit excited, to be honest, thinking about what, what could be done, especially in light of the funding that could be potentially available to the city. And then, if you want to flip to the next slide. So what I did here is I started drilling down on that, those west side projects. This first potential location shown is West Seventh Street. That's one of the first ones, it's the furthest south in the city, that's a potential grade separation project. I tried to outline the impacts of the area in red. This is alternative, of course, there's really not a whole lot that's been done to this point. And then if you flip to the next photo there, that's just the, the existing crossing as it exists today, that's looking south, down the tracks. The next photo there is of, this is the second location, which is West Front Street. And by the way, each one of these three potential locations for a grade separation, they have their cons and pros. The, the con really on the Seventh Street project is the curvature of the, there's not, there's not a whole lot of infrastructure to deal with, but there's curvature in the road, which could pose some issues. I don't know that it's the most viable spot for the crossing, or a crossing, but that has yet to be found. But this second crossing is West Front Street, it has direct connection to M-50 right through downtown. And then if you follow those various routes that I was kind of trying to draw out a few slides prior, you can just see how that could connect up down First Street and on, or over to Elm, across Rossler, et cetera. So just kind of endless possibilities. And a couple of photos to go along with that as well, that's as, Front Street as it exists today, looking west, same. And then there's another challenge with the West Front Street is the existing truss on the river, it's very close proximity to Front Street, so there's some, many challenges with that location as well. And then the third, third potential is the West Elma Avenue potential, grade separation. Again, the red line kind of outlines where there could be some potential impact to the area, basically from Rossler Street to Huber, likely going to impact the YMCA, et cetera. And then a couple of photos that go along with it, looking up and down the roadway there. One of the larger, probably, issues with this crossing is the fact that the Mason Run Drain in this photo on the screen crosses right at the track, just to the east side, and we would have to reroute that, that drain in order to make this happen at this location. But the bottom line is, is there's, there's availability, there's funding, it's a little bit of a pressing need, again, these are very competitive-type grants. Monroe's, Monroe is really set up to win some of these, we have some proven track record with Quandal Consultants, winning some of these grants. We have some proven track record with Quandall Consultants, winning some of these grants as, just recently, the Chrissy Grants.
One of the things that, excuse me, one of the things that I, I should have mentioned is, is that the federal grant announcement for this year's allocation is due to be published in the Federal Register this month. And generally after the register, after they publish the notice in the register, I don't want to use the acronym that they, that they use. It's, it generally have about three months to get a, to get an application in. So there's going to be a cycle again next year, of course, but, you know, we really, we're anxiously awaiting when the actual, we believe we have a good idea of what the rules and everything are going to be from the Federal Regime Administration, from our past work, but to see the actual requirements published and knowing the deadlines and timeframes and everything, we expect that to be anytime now.
I would mention, one other thing is just gaining support of the community and the stakeholders. We have contacted Senator Zorn's office. He's on board. In fact, we have a meeting with his office tomorrow to talk a little bit more about the possibilities for Monroe and funding from a state level and standpoint.
Good question. Thanks, Tim. So the purpose of the presentation this evening was just to introduce the concept to City Council. As Tim indicated, time can be a bit of an essence, of the essence, if we'd like to pursue these funds this year. So given the large amount that's out there, if this is something that council is interested in, we begin to work with Chris and Tim to develop a proposal to start looking at, nailing down what's, what the application would look, look like. Where do we want to apply for? What would the project look like? And then actually put the application together over the next three months to get it in in time. So open to questions and discussion.
Sure, I'll see if there's questions. Brian, and I'll, I have some comments, too.
Yeah, not a question, but a comment, yeah. Where do we start? Let's get it going. I love it.
So I look at this and I think there's, you know, I think the statement said there's, we, we know that on the, the west side, it's, it's easier to see the locations on the, on our east tracks. It's just, there's so many. And then which is the most viable and which should be the best possibility? It makes me think of the work that's ongoing now. We're in the middle of the Pell process regarding I-75. The interchange is at Front and Elm, but then Front Street is really First Street when you come on through there. And I, I look in at this and seeing, you know, just some highlights on the, on the, the map here, makes me think about First Street. And then it's the same, same topics for both, is the connectivity, the, the police fire response, the, the connecting communities versus having separation and, you know, space. And I'm looking at the, the renderings here and the, the distance and the space, it makes me think of what, what it would be for when you talk about East First Street or, you know, if that, because that's going to be the larger volume of traffic versus any of the other cross streets here. Not that they're not important, a third's important, they're all important, but when you talk about the ability to maneuver through without having to stop and how that's going to, where that would flow most, the volume best be. So I, and I know the, the rail consolidation, if I think back before us here, but I think back the conversations I came in when we just missed it by just a short amount of opportunity for that to go through. And then we had to move or lose the funding we had. And so we took that resource and used it for improvements that were, are beneficial. So I, I just, that's just my thought. There's like, I guess going back to Brian, where do you start? I think there's probably a conversation the council would have to have before we look at a, a, a grade separation of what are we trying to achieve and what's best to achieve for the community as a whole, so. But I think there's, there's, there's many opportunities, many options to choose from.
Mark. Yeah, to your point, Mayor and Councilman Lemoore, when we first met with Tim and Chris, there was a question of which ones do we start looking at and, and which crossings do we start to prioritize? And, and it's hard to think about because the ones that are on the east side of town, you can make just as justifiable as an argument as the ones that are on the west side of town. And so, you know, we, we came with no predetermined judgments. We made no decisions, but, you know, thought it was a significant enough project. And, and if we get a proposal from Manikin Smith and Tim to start working on the project, obviously we would keep counsel and communication on how the application's looking and as we're progressing before we submit. As Chris mentioned, we do have a meeting with Senators Zorn tomorrow as well to start talking about the likelihood of the city taking the feedback from tonight, likelihood of beginning to pursue these funds a little more with a serious eye.
Sure. Yeah, I look at it and I think about what's in, what's in, what's moving forward regarding I-75 and the interchange. We know that's going to have a significantly different impact when you talk about the First Street overpass and, and, or rails and the road. And makes me think about, does that gain value when submitting a project, knowing that there's already this significant commitment to moving forward and making those for the right reasons for a safe interchange and a more manageable route from there to the, to the, not just, I mean, so many things, so direct route to downtown, but before that, of course, is our old trade east neighborhood and the, the National Park. And makes me think about those, the benefits as well. They're all, they're all great locations, though.
And it'll really come down to, if I may, Mayor, when, when the NOFA is announced at the federal level and when the state announces, what are the priorities going to be? And, you know, as we look at all the different intersections and the grades, you know, which ones are highest in likelihood to score once the final details come down from, from the state and feds?
Thanks, Mark. That's a great point, because I know that we, we think of one thing and next thing when they come out, it's like, well, this doesn't quite fit. It might fit, but what's the best fit? So once we know that, I think we can probably, if council has an interest, maybe hone in on a potential and then make, have the conversation whether there's, that's something they'd like to see, at least submitting something for. The questions, Kelly?
So I'm not sure I'm completely understanding what this is. So are you, do you already have certain criteria identified for what type of criteria you want to meet at each of these individual crossings? And then does this mean, okay, so you're working with the railroad to say, we're going to shut this line down, or we're going to move this line, or we're going to build an overpass? Like what, what does this mean, grade separation? I'm not sure I quite understand.
Yeah, the criteria, we're waiting to see what the final criteria is from the feds and state on the funding to see what the highest priorities are going to be. And then the grade separation that we're looking at, we're not necessarily looking at a consolidation of the lines or closing down crossings like we've done in the past. This is in particular doing pretty much what we did with the John Dingell Bridge on North Dixie Highway and creating a separation so traffic doesn't back up, so you can get across the tracks and make flow through town a little easier.
Am I mistaken that we had a vision of that in the heritage corridor, plan in the past or?
A few different locations for it in the, in the original plan. Yep.
Thank you.
Primarily pedestrian, but also looked at vehicular, too.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Other questions? Brian?
Yeah, we as City Council have always said that this is one of the things that presents a landlocked situation for the city of Monroe. And if it weren't for north and south, we really can't go east and west unless we cross the tracks. The only thing allowing us to do that is, is the Dingell underpass. So this makes perfect sense to me and, and I'd hope that the people at the Fed would, would see the same sense that we can see here, that we are trapped, basically. And what it could free up for our city would be very advantageous.
Yeah, and that, you know, to that point, that's sort of why we looked more at the west side initially in the presentation rather than the east side, because there is a Dingell underpass there. We all know we've been in the position where Seventh, Front, Elm have all been blocked and you have to go all the way up to Stewart Road. And sometimes that's blocked and you got to go Mall Road or Dunbar. And it just makes the city of Monroe impassable. And the traffic backups that result from that are a lot longer, more impactful throughout the residential neighborhoods in downtown. So, you know, those are some of the criteria that we toss back and forth, but.
Definitely, I think the path of least resistance would probably be the consolidation on the east side. Not that, I, I agree with you. I think the west side needs an opening somewhere, but I, I think it's probably the least constraining as far as the Fed may see it as, as an easier do, to take out the tracks that are, that run along Kentucky Avenue there, especially since they're right on top of homes.
We talked about that, yes.
It'd be just such a great thing to get rid of that track right there and just consolidate it with the CNN right, right, you know, what, less than a quarter of a mile away.
Yeah, and certainly we understand with rail in the city of Monroe, there's many problems with more than one solution that's needed. And, and when we look at these funding, these funding opportunities, you know, it's, it's chasing where it's available and where it's focused. So by all means, yeah.
So this is a presentation to see, Michelle?
So how do the railroads, there's two railroads that run through our city, how do they fit into this whole equation? If we get a grant.
I'll let you guys. So there's, there's three main roads. CSX is the one furthest west. Then there's Norfolk Southern CN that run on the corridor easterly. And Tim is our answer to communication with the railroads.
I always got a lot of sympathy when I was at MDOT because everybody had a lot of problems. And I used to say, well, I have to deal with the railroads. And they were like, okay. But no, you know, one of the things that you, that, that needs to happen is, is that you need to have the railroad on board. And that's starting to work with them in the concept stage, right on, right on up through the, the actual construction. And, you know, one of the keys here is with the state money and the federal money, and particularly the state money, the Michigan Railroad Association has kind of been the driving force behind getting the state grade separation fund program established. So with that said, Canadian National, Norfolk Southern and CSX have been at all the tables and they were in attendance at all the, all the meetings that Representative Dingell held and been in many others in conversations with Senators Zorn and other, and other legislations. With that said, you still need to get their endorsement, and that is going to be a key criteria, that the railroad is, pardon the pun, on board with the project. And there may be many reasons for and many reasons against. One of the big hurdles getting over is if you can mitigate their financial obligation, which between the two programs and that, there's, there's good possibilities there. And then, of course, you, you mentioned about closing the railroad and all of that. The railroads don't have a detour like we do on, on a highway system. So you have to generally maintain traffic at the, on the railroad at, at all times. And it's, there's construction methodologies that you can, you can use to do that, to keep the train traffic flowing. Unfortunately, doesn't always work with, with the highway traffic. And, but the, the fortunate part there is, is there are proximity roads where you can detour and, and run around and, and do things like that. So, did I, did I answer your question or? Okay.
Brian, talk.
Yeah, one last thing. We, we have an agenda item tonight for the Port of Monroe that's concerning a funding of a cargo inspection project down at the port, which would lead to potentially bringing in containers into the port, which would be a, a huge thing for the rail. And I, I could see potentially that being a possibility of them reconstructing their rail system around that. So it's not just the I-75 project, but it's also the port project that could push us into the rail mitigation or consolidation.
Full disclosure, I am no longer with the Michigan Department of Transportation. I'm working for Quandall Consultants. But with that said, when I was at MDOT, as little as, just over two years ago, there is what's called the Supply Chain and Logistics Collaboration. And it is a group of folks that, experts that come together on supply chain and transportation issues. And we partner with the Great Lakes Port Authority and Paul from, Mar from the.
Port of Monroe.
Port, Port of Monroe has been very vocal on it. He chairs the, the counterpart. MDOT actually, through one of their economic development projects, funded some rail improvements to allow for VIN tower and some of the wind, wind apparatuses to be, to be offloaded there. So yes, there, there are a lot of, a lot of opportunities there. When you mentioned Kentucky Avenue, I, I have to think, I, I was MDOT's project engineer on that back in the mid, late eighties, when we were building, rebuilding Kentucky Avenue along the wall of Ashville or Conrail, now Canadian, excuse me, Norfolk Southern line, line through there. And I'm, you know, amazed that it's still that way. I mean, there's very few places where you can go where you have to walk across the track to get to your mailbox.
The point, too, though, is all of those economic development components add into the grant and really help to solidify capture of it. They'll look at all of those things and that's another major component that could be wrote into the grant, so.
And mentioning that, and you mentioned the Pell study and everything that's going on, that's, that, that does provide a lot of support for it. But then the negative side of it is, without having the outcome of the Pell study yet, you know, so the good part is you can start looking at the east side in conjunction with the Pell study. And you could go and move ahead on the west side project and then look at it for future, for future years in the much, much larger project on the, on the east side, or vice versa. But, you know, one would be to, you know, study something now or build something now. How do you want to go?
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I know that we have a couple more items, so I'll just, I will, I'm sure council will be thinking about this and we'll obviously go with administration, Mr. Cochran, Mr. Pastu, and see where we go, might be next.
So if I may, is the general consensus to pursue the discussion further and get a proposal together to bring back to City Council?
I'm hearing affirmative, just not with the votes, but the idea that, you know, we, we've long talked about the idea of, of grade separation and how to improve the, the community, no matter what part of the community it is, it's going to be a positive impact and allow for the factors that were there. They may not be the criteria as they come out, but those criteria right there, you can just hit those buttons. So I think it's, I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Director Tolsted, the next item?
Yes, sir. Next item up for discussion is 3583, the review of the naming policy.
Okay, I guess I'll start that. And I know, first I want to say, thank Councilman Vining and Councilman Felder for their work on the, I'll say the committee. We've, we've been through this numerous times on different versions and are doing research and what's might be working elsewhere and what's been changed. So tonight's the opportunity to kind of review, but there is some time essence to, to this topic because as we've talked about previous, we all know that we've received requests for naming over the years. We have one that's kind of coming close to a timeframe for some planned activities, but we still have to make sure we're making decisions for the right reasons and what's in front of us. But the, the idea is that I wanted to review the policy. We did send it out and hopefully everybody had an opportunity to read it. I'm not going to read it verbatim. I think that's what we do on it, that's what we do individually. I just wanted to go through a couple of highlights and I'll let either Kelly or Andrew say anything they wish, but the, the intent of this and why this, it's like in two segments. The front page of what we found at one of the, a couple of communities, they had a front page, you could go online and then a resident could see that. I, I don't want to negate, forget, because they're not going to forget, because they're going to say it later, I'll say it now. Communications Director has worked with us and Clerk Lavoy has worked with us because there's assets, a role for the clerk's office when we start talking about maintaining records, maintaining contact, follow-up later on. So it's kind of worked across those lines. So we, so the first page is this, where a person would go, read the, this front sheet of the page, which just talks about policy and procedure. I put the blue at the bottom, they're kind of like click spots where you can go and go direct if you wanted to see the, the, what the policy might be, what the application form looks like, or what the procedure and free structure would be. I might change some wording at the bottom with the, I think they're kind of long, we can, I can simplify that typing. But the clerk, clerks right at the front because it's the start point. It, it comes in, it goes to the administration. So I kind of want to review, the policy statement on the next page is the same. As the committee talked about it, and we think we talked with council, we, we said how, we'll have a naming committee and what would be the makeup of that? And that's where we started, so many people here and where they'd be from. And we read so many different ones where you had to get petitions from throughout the city to where you had to get certain, buy-in from every precinct in the city. And it just got a little cumbersome as we talked it through of how a person simply wants to make a request and how do we manage that request? And as we went through it, we had talked about the Ethics Committee, a committee that we have that is of highest importance of issues that need to be dealt with when there's an ethical issue. So when you think about naming, think about, we're getting an ask for do something, there's the, the background of what the ask might be, but then there's also to do, make sure you do. importance of issues that need to be dealt with when there's an ethical issue. So when you think about naming, think about we're getting an ask for do something, there's the, the background of what the ask might be. But then there's also to do, make sure you do our diligence. And so we thought about the Ethics Committee. I will say, in where we're at with that, the city manager will be meeting with the Ethics Committee next week to have this conversation about this policy. It's kind of following line right with us as well. But as it currently sits, we think of the, things come in, administration does their due diligence and reviews and kind of what that's going to take, both to logistically, but to carry out. And then, then goes to the Ethics Committee, and they have an X amount of days to which they have to review it, make sure they're doing their timeframe. And if the Ethics Committee has a recommendation, it comes back to council. There are so many days which council has, and it's in the report here. One of the items that came up is, well, what if it's, item is not approved? You know, you don't want to entertain the same thing a month later, and then it's not approved. Another thing, three months later. So if we talked that through, we thought, you know, there should be a time and waiting period. They're either not prepared to submit something, or it's just not being submitted correctly. So we put a, we thought a one-year waiting period was a good submission. Then it talks about the who, as we looked at, and of course, we have more than one request at this time that's come in over the years, but we've not had a policy or an ordinance. This year, at this time, is looking at, we're starting with a policy, but maybe something that morphed into a ordinance. We thought a resident or a former residents must have to have some relationship here with the community and as a residence. And we have thrown out 10 years as the start point. And I'll, I know council members that are in the committee, they'll have, they want to have some thoughts as well. But, and then we put in here what, what might be used as a reason, the criteria for consideration, and what might be a name, but also how you take in honor or commemorative net worth, noteworthy persons, but what's that standard in which they might, must have. Denial of an application is in here. It talks about how they're, what that would be based off of. We got into some exclusions because some of the ask were, we wanted, I actually was down in Detroit today for a meeting with the MML, and I was going down the street and I saw the blue sign over the top of the street, which was a honorary or dual naming of a street. And we decided that, in the conversation, not, that not, won't be, that's not to be considered. Well, if I, just, as we did some research and I looked at some things, some streets that had the secondary naming, all the secondary naming, all of a sudden became the naming, and the one below it was removed. And then it's really a renaming, not a secondary naming. And that's discussed in the, here as well. Naming rights, if they're giving in some fashion on public property, cannot limit its use. And uncertain things associated, as we said, drugs, alcohol, it's back when, all the things are not a consideration. Renaming would be different because it's not just naming for a request for, on a public property. The renaming is changing what's already named. We thought that required a strong, it was strongly discouraged because you have to know why something is named before you change it. And then if it does lessen or diminish the original justification why the name was being, and devalue, devalue prior contributions. So the city council, as, as we know, has, deserves the right, or has, reserves the right, and they would do that on the naming. Rescinding, you know, nothing would be worse than to have a naming of something and find out months later that there was something that was unknown that comes forward that would obviously discredit or being distributed to the community. And the city council would have the ability to automatically rescind or send it to the ethics if they wish to, for further investigation or review, and then come back for a decision. The renewal, you know, we name things, we've named things in the past, and this isn't about the past. This is about what's being presented to us now. The naming rights, we, as we reviewed, there were some that said it would stay for 50 years, and some said 10 years. And I think somewhere in between is where it would be, because there's an opportunity to then for a council to review naming that is done by a previous council. And so the, at least the proposal as it is at this point, since 25 years. And at that point, it can either be removed or left in place. And then Councilman Felder brought this up, but it was at the city council discretion through majority vote. So it has to come back to council for action. You can't just let it be bypassed and bypassed and never addressed. This way, it's a formal step. So you think, well, who's going to manage all this? And where's that record going to be held? That's where the clerk's office comes in. So once an item comes through, and let's say something is approved by the council, it goes back to the administration to coordinate that. But the record goes back to the clerk's office for the follow-up that might be, because it may still not come through, because there's this, there's a last part I'm going to kind of review, so I don't run too long here. You know, naming requests, there was, we talked about a fee and what that should be. We didn't think a fee is necessary just to submit an application, to be told that, no, we're not going to approve it. But when you get later in the process where it's approved and design, and there's got to be some design work or implementation, now it's about cost of that. And I think as a community, and I think as Kelly brought up, and then we talked about is, you know, this is part of the community. We are part of the community. If we're going to accept something, we should accept part of that responsibility as well. But at the same time, those that are making the request have to have some kind of buy-in to the, the process as well as kind of how the, the discussion went. So we thought there should be fee equal to the estimated cost, but be 50% the city, city would have. These are, this is all proposal. This is all in draft. We're looking to present this tonight for the council's thought, thoughts, as you read through it or what you're hearing today. But then again, recorded and retained through the clerk's office. If, if there's a fee that's set for that to, to, to make the science, design it and implement it, if it's not received within 60 days, then the application is closed. Again, they can come back and ask again within a year's timeframe of a, of, of wait. There's, we had in here about endowment fund. We, we kind of kicked this around a few times, and we saw those in a few of the, those that we researched, but at a minimal cost. And, and it's not something I think that would rise to the level that we'd have to set up through a nonprofit or through the community foundation. But talking to the administration, I talked, we talked with Mr. Pastu. He thought it's something that could be managed easily through the finance director or designated. So just to maintain, because things happen. Of course, that might be part of the review. That's the quick review. I hope everybody had a chance to read. Well, take comments or questions. I want to give Kelly and Andrew an opportunity, any thoughts they may have on the time we spent reviewing this today, or thoughts, either one. They're smiling. Kelly?
Yeah, I think we've been working on this for almost a year.
Well over.
So we went through a lot of drafts, thanks to the mayor, because he, he really led the charge. And Andrew, with our discussions, going over and trying to make the best policy. So, I mean, we, we really went over this and drafted and redrafted it several times. So be good to hear from everyone else what they think about it. I guess last year I was approached, little over a year, by the Mendez family, asking to honor the Rans Allen Group, which is an international gospel group. And then while we were in the process of considering how to do that, because we didn't have a policy or an ordinance in place, I think the, the city engineer and the charter is responsible for naming streets. But beyond that, we didn't have anything. And I had spoken with Jeff Green about the monument policy, which probably still needs to be.
That's coming next.
Updated. And then we had the conversation about the Custer statue. So there's a lot of reasons why we needed to put something like this in place, just because we didn't have an avenue for residents to do. And we, we thought early on that we didn't want to make it about individual council members wanting to, like, I might think something is so important, oh, let's name this, you know, Apple Tree Street or whatever. And then to make it less subjective, to have this, this policy in place. So I think it's a good policy. And so that's kind of a background on how we started. And here we are, a year later. In that time, Rans Allen did pass away. Is this a good time to bring up about the resolution or?
Yeah.
Keep that for council comments?
Yeah, council comments, I think so.
Okay, all right.
Because we, I want to make sure we get the council members' comments here on this as well. Then we can kind of review what may be coming in the near future. And then, of course, the council has to have, has to understand what, what the draft is about, what, where it may go for council in the future, if, if wanting to see it as an item on the upcoming council meeting. And then, then can talk about some of the pending. We have one pending, actually. The others have been put on hold because they're not real specific in ask. This one was specific, and, and it was mentioned from the Mendez family on Rans Allen Group, was really about like honorary or secondary naming. Of course, once we worked through that and said, well, that's not what we think we're going to do. So what can be done? So that's kind of where that's going to go. And we'll have further contact with the Mendez family. I've stayed in contact with them as well. Andrew, so thought, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So, so I like this policy because then it takes it out of our individual hands and puts it into the resident or the person making the request, based on how they present their application and the information that they present. And then it'll go through the clerk's office and, and possibly the ethics and the proper, it'll go through a proper vetting instead of just like one council person making that request. So, so I like, I like this. And I'm interested to hear what the rest of the council has to say about it.
Thanks. I'll see, Andrew, thoughts, follow-ups?
Again, I would just like to thank Kelly and the mayor for working with us on this, especially Bob, who put this whole thing together and drafted the policy. There was a lot of work that went on there. I think that it was a very thorough review. I think I can say that rather safely. We worked really hard to not have this in any perspective of any particular issue or any particular individuals who might be involved, but rather focus on having a structure in place that when all of us are gone, what, what policy would we like to, to put forth and have remain and, and be in place decades to come? I, I think it, we tried to be very non-biased about it. We tried to, to give community input in, but still make sure that the costs are controlled. And I think that the way that we went about it with the three council members, in simplifying the process from what some of the initial drafts were, has taken a, a large part of the burden and resources of, that would be on staff for review and implementation. That with, with a review process from one of the committees going to, to counsel, the only additional cost in any of these applications would be the city paying for its portion of, its portion of the item that's to be established. So I think that, that that was, that was really a concern. We, we wanted to constrain it in, in that context. But I'm, I'm really proud of the work that we did. And I'm, I'm supportive of the policies that's drafted now, so.
So before, any thoughts from council members? Say, you know, we heard our presentation earlier about criteria and what's the, what's that? Some page three, it talks about, you know, these are regarding parks, alleyways, recreation areas, municipal buildings, facilities, public right of ways based on the following. It gives the what it can be, but then if it's about person, what level of, that they would rise to for a consideration. In the end, it comes to city council. If the, if it goes through the process, the Ethics Committee says it thinks that something they would move for, for the consideration to the council. They're not making this, they're not saying, they may say yes or no, they, but you know, the, the council in the end is the one that's making the decision. And, and through further discussion with the council, within the timeframe it's listed in here, it, it may or may not be approved. In the end, it does come to the council, but it's at least had been vetted in, in a variety of places, including through the administration. So we have all the information, what it's going to take to meet the request. And I think the requests will continue to be adjusted as it moves through, because some requests just won't be a consideration. So I'll stop, see if there's thoughts or questions from council members. Any thoughts, concerns?
What's the next step?
Next step is, because we do have something moving forward, wanted to present this out for information, also in time to digest it. But the next council meeting, and we'd like to move it forward as a policy for adoption. I think it gives us the opportunity, like I said, next week with the Ethics Board, see the committees, or Ethics Board, see where they're at. And then also, the, I'll say, the application at hand. Oh, one party didn't put in here, I was going to say it quickly. It's an online application, just like all of our, our requests for activities in the city are. And while that's not what I have now, because it was a letter then, I would still ask to have it submitted through. We start the process and see that, make sure we understand the full flow of the work to see how it's going to identify anything that might be. So this is really kind of the test pilot that's coming forward. I think the request, we're well aware what the request is. We've heard about it a few times now. And I think it's going to come together that where it could be a consideration under this policy in a short timeframe, but still be something that gets fully vetted, that is what the intent of the policy is for. So if there's not any questions, I guess expect to see anything, please send them forward to the committee, or you can send them direct to Mr. Pastu, and, and we can put that into anything that might see in here that you don't, maybe have a question about. Any other questions? Ben, Brian?
If, if we really don't have anything etched in stone now, I think this is the time to do it. And it seems like it's been pretty well thought out. So it's a good democratic process, which is what we, we always yearn to do here at City Council. So let's take the step forward. Let's get it done.
And being a policy, council can amend policies and adjust them.
Correct.
Find out. And being objective about this and having a, that other view that's coming forward, and both administratively, both ethics, and then of course, council can add to questions. There's, you don't have to make a decision right then. There's X amount of time that the, the policy has. So I think we, gives us to be able to fully vet it, and it can be done quickly if necessary. All right, then we'll just see what we've had forward, and we'll see at the next meeting on this. But please send anything forward. So we have one item, and I think it's just a short couple minutes to speak to. I don't, Director Tolsted, if you or I am doing that, or I know that Councilman Felder is aware of it?
Yes, you're right. I can give the brief introduction if you like. So the next item up for discussion is 3584, to propose changes to the post-retiree healthcare fund target allocations. This is in conjunction with the investment advisor legal council, councils, pardon me, with the City of Monroe Post Retirement Healthcare to trustees that recommend an amendment to the trust funds investment target allocations, which must be approved by the city. This is intended to introduce an item at city council for formal action at the June 20th meeting.
So at the, at the, you know, we have an employees' compensation, the pension board, and we also have the healthcare trust. And many, most of us here, we're here and set up that trust. Well, one of the things is, it came out, and the attorney to the pension board said, the trust is written, written in such a way that the allocations are how much percent you might have in fixed income, how much you might have in this asset allocation. And they make these adjustments, but as you read, the trust, the healthcare trust, it has to come back to city council, which is, which then we're stepping in as a fiduciary, and we have responsibilities that really aren't ours intended to do. So that's what the director said, is going to come back to us. This is kind of an informational, why it's coming back is we may need to revisit the healthcare trust to make it, as the pension board is, that the, the board members are making those allocations. The, our, our investment advisors are there saying, we think you should change it from 1% to the 2% over here and adjust them based on the markets. And if we're going to start doing that, then we are going to be the, and then you have to look at the pension and healthcare trust boards and say, okay, we have a board that we've appointed to make these decisions. So the idea is it's coming back. And Councilman Felder, you're the representative on the pension and healthcare. Any other thoughts or comments to this?
Yeah, I think that there were some. I think there were some adjustments to, to our fixed income portfolio proportions in, actually fixed income, I think was performing rather well, but it's an anticipation of the market drying up due to the increase in interest rates for the rest of the year. So they're trying to get ahead of it. So, so like the mayor said, allowing the, the board, the independents to make those decisions allows us some increase in flexibility and speed. And that's probably, that, that's probably where that, that duty is, you know, most appropriately resides.
So on the pension board or the employees' retirement, those don't come back to the city council and be decided what the funds will be and what percentage. And so why do we have it in the healthcare trust? I think it's just the way it got written and got developed. And the, I would say, the legal advisor said, well, we, we, and did, she did her research on it, and we kept meeting after meeting, still looking into something, and came back and said, it should go to city council for a consideration and to, to adjust the trust to, to give the healthcare trust fund board that decision-making. So just letting you know it's going to come forward, and that's kind of what it's on, on the agenda for. Last comments or questions? I know we have, Director Tolsted may say, but I'll, I'll start. So we have an item that's not, we're asking not to have, to have removed from the agenda. Mr. Pastu, obviously, is not here. And one of the items that we were going to go into closed session, I know Mr. Buzz may have some comments as well, but, so I know that the city manager wants to have some direct conversation with council regarding the items that were on the. regarding the items that were on the land acquisition and other items in closed session. So the requests are asked us to remove the closed executive session from the council agenda when we come back at the start of the meeting. Director Tolsted, was there anything further on that?
Yeah, additionally, Your Honor, at the regular council meeting, any questions concerning, if there's questions concerning items 3573 and 3575, we request that it be moved to the June 20th meeting.
Thank you. And those two items are, one is the 2022 sidewalk replacement program. Mr. Lewis can't be here this evening as well, it'd be an item he would bring in that. There's an adjustment on some of the geographic area, but we're getting more requests from residents for others. And so trying to manage with the revenues is to streamline in the area. That's kind of the gist of some of the change in the mapping that was in the agenda. The second item, which is really kind of a change order to add to an zigzag sting contract because GV Cement Contracting is doing work here in the city. And recognize, we recognize and have been, as put off from last year, the former east side fire station, which of course now is the location for the MCA ambulance. The small back parking area is crumbling and I think in fairness, it needs to be done. But Mr. Pastu is saying if there's going to be, if there's questions or concerns about those two, then he asked, maybe they'd be asked to be, as they come forward, can, the council can, I guess, decide if they want to postpone or postpone those items if necessary, or we could go forward. So he's leaving that option to us. But he is asking, of course, the closed executive session be, be removed from the agenda.
So we can take action on these?
Yes, we can.
If we're comfortable, but if we have questions, we can propose that is postponed.
Correct.
Okay.
So we, but we can take action on those this evening if, but again, it just is just like, Councilman, if there's questions or concerns, then please bring those up and we'll have the conversation. If not, they can move forward. Mr. Buzz, did I miss anything?
No, I think you're all set, Your Honor.
I know, we only have about a minute or two, so unless there's anything. Clerk Trish, do you have anything final?
No, we just have two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll close the work session. We have a couple minutes.